Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners' April 18, 2022 meeting. And I will call on, this is gonna be, where's my, oh, there's my clerk right there. I was just kinda, so this is gonna be a remote meeting. I'll make sure that I have Commissioner Evans on the line. They're just gonna help you out a little bit.
No, I'm just reading.
Let me see if I can check something, because he may be speaking. And so while he was doing that, I will remind each commissioner that when we are speaking, you have to identify yourself if you keep trying that.
I will text him.
Okay, I just did. We would do invocation by Vice Chairwoman Toni Stewart and the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Stewart.
If you bow your heads, please. Dear God, we thank you for this day. We thank you, God, for this opportunity. We thank you, God, for each and every person represented here today. God, thank you for giving us a heart and concern, God, for our community and the citizens of Cumberland County. I pray, God, that you would give the commissioners wisdom, guidance, and clarity as we go forth to do the work of the people. God, we honor you and we thank you for this day. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united in the principle with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Manager, normally, we would have our introduction of our Fayetteville Cumberland County Youth Council members, but it is Easter break, and they're probably out and enjoying their Easter break, so we will look forward to having them at our next meeting.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right. Then I will call on you to introduce our new Assistant County Manager.
Yes, sir. I am pleased and honored this evening to introduce James Bryan Haney. He has joined us from Harnett County with a wealth of experience. He has an English degree from Duke University, a Master's of Public Administration from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. Over his career, he has worked with various county departments such as Human Resources, Emergency Services, Parks and Recreation, Library, Information Technology, Board of Elections. He's also worked with Budgeting, Communications, Capital Projects, and Renovations, and he was also their PIO. And so, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this position has been vacant for some period of time, and we're glad to have Mr. Haney with us. And I'll ask him if he'd like to come to the podium and say a few words.
Well, I tell you what, he's already smart enough to wear the Duke blue on the jacket and then the Carolina blue with the shirt, so he knows how to do it.
I'm conflicted.
You didn't have any red and white on, so we ain't not gonna talk about NC State. But go ahead.
I just wanna say that it's a pleasure to be here and to join the team at Cumberland County, and I'm looking forward to adding value to the organization and working with the county employees, the board, and county management.
And we want to welcome you to Cumberland County. We're glad you're here. I know the manager and the other assistant managers are pleased that you're here, and we look forward to working with you and working with the board. So, welcome to Cumberland County.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
That will take us to the public comment period. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, as you know, the public comment period is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts with the commissioners. We set aside no more than 15 minutes. Time may not be yielded to other speakers. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to make their remarks. We ask that as the public comes forward to share their thoughts, that they would please give their name and address. I do want to remind the public this evening that this comment period is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions, and we ask that speakers discuss issues that are germane to Cumberland County government. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we're ready for the speakers.
And do we have any speakers, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we have one speaker this evening, Ms. Robin Bridges.
All right. Ms. Bridges, come right on up.
Ms. Adams.
How you doing this afternoon?
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Robin Bridges. I live at 2886 Wade Stedman Road in Stedman, North Carolina. This is regarding previous planning cases on 2647 Wade Stedman Road, Faithwell Home Subdivision, Ben Stout Builder. You approved this on February 15, 2021. One of the biggest concerns brought forward during planning of this subdivision was water issues. Flooding was observed for decades by residents directly through and across the property and roadway with serious runoff and erosion. A topographic map was even submitted in your handout. We were assured by the builder, 4D, and the commissioners that all guidelines and regulations would be followed. The current approval letter from DEQ states that no unapproved disturbing activity is to take place outside of the 5.83 acres of 30.2 acres total. There are six pending homes nearing completion, and one refurbished home onsite has been sold. Most certainly, all of this actual home building has taken place outside of the approved area. The latest inspection report by DEQ dated 4/8/22 cites six current violations, and the subdivision is stated not to be in compliance with stormwater requirements. A dozen corrective action and comments are listed. The promised retention pond is not present. All homes have been built outside the limits of construction. Mr. Stout's poor history and specific consumer reviews with runoff and erosion issues were presented to this board. I'm requesting your urgent attention to these environmental violations and flagrant disregard of stormwater regulations in Cumberland County. We need quality homes, not shoddy ones with erosion problems. I request that Mr. Stout or any builder in this situation not be granted commissioners' approvals until he remedies this and other non-compliances with Demler, and that all work at the above worksite outside the LOC be halted until the same occurs. I would ask that you request Demler to enforce these regulations with stiff penalties as provided by law. All buyers of the six homes involved and their respective realtors should be notified immediately in writing of these violations. There is no public database to research these violations, so to protect the public interest, planning staff and the board should address these in their reviews and approvals. We're already dealing with contaminated water in that area. All I'm asking is that the laws be followed, and I have sent the commissioners an email yesterday detailing these and showing the letters that back up the violations. So, I would ask that you institute policies to prevent this from happening, and thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
There are no further speakers.
All right. Thank you. That will close the public comment period. That will take us to the approval of the agenda. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. We have no changes this evening.
All right. If I can get a motion to approve the agenda. If you identify yourself when you-
Larry Lancaster, motion to approve.
Jeanette Council, second.
Commissioner Lancaster, your vote?
You gotta say yes.
To approve, yes. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Council, your vote?
To approve, yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Chairman Adams?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
That will take us to our presentations. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. I'm pleased this evening to ask Mr. LeVar Wright to come forward, and he's gonna share some information about an event, the E. Smith Sports Hall of Fame.
Welcome, Mr. Wright.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Don't even say my name and address and all that for some-
Yes.
You need to say something first. Can I get started?
No, I was just wondering why my name on inside the program. Go ahead, right ahead.
Well, you might have one in the revised version of that. Commissioner Adams, you were very helpful in this process.
Didn't get into the Hall of Fame. I wasn't that good.
Well, you did the academic portion of it, so we'll let you slide.
Thank you.
I need you to quit taking over my time. How much time do I have?
You got three minutes.
Okay, so you missed-
I just started. You're good.
Okay. Okay, so I'm LeVar Wright, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 513 Woodcliff Drive, 28311. On behalf of the National Association of E. Smith Alumni and Friends Incorporated, I bring you all greetings as Commissioners. This is not an ask for money. I think a lot of people come before you with events asking for money. This is just more of an ask for support. There's business owners. E. Smith is part of Cumberland County school systems, and we have been a part of the Cumberland County school systems, to include Fayetteville City Schools, for almost a century. So, this conversation is probably way overdue. So, the Hall of Fame is basically a collection of athletics, education beyond the high school level. So, we have 21 inductees for our inaugural session.
Go ahead.
Okay. And I'm gonna go over the names, but I just wanna kinda give you a history lesson before we get started. E. Smith's roots run deep in our local community, as we all, as well as all over the country. The passion for the school is evidenced by its rich legacy that athletics hold today at Smith. The sports legacy began when Fayetteville City Schools were segregated. All African-American students from the city of Fayetteville attended E. Smith. According to the website Pro Football Reference, E. Smith has sent more players to the NFL than any other high school in North Carolina, and that's pretty outstanding. Unfortunately, we have not, to this day, recognized those success. There's other forums that have been in place that recognize our Hall of Famers, which is why our Hall of Fame makes more difference, because it's necessary for the school to give back to these folks that have done so much more for our community. The fundraising package you all should all have is basically set up so you can see the list of names of the gentlemen and women that have been inducted. There are coaches, past and present, and then also student athletes that have already come and gone recently and from years ago. So, I'm gonna run down the names real fast and get that out of the way so you guys at least know. You might see some names that you know. G.C. Carter, he's the name on the school. William J. Carter, D.S. Kelly, and I say the school, I apologize, our stadium. D.S. Kelly, Isaiah Ike Walker, Sr., also Latanya D. Hardy, who is currently there, and Roy McNeil, he graduated in 1964. On the back of it, there's a brief description of some of the things that they've done. Charles Baggett, Brian Bullock, Aaron Curry, he supported the school. He built a, in addition to our school, he built a weight room and actually supplied uniforms and such for our football team. Russell Davis came out in 1994. Joey Evans, Bishop Harris, Joe Harris, Jason Terrell Hunter, Luther Nick Gerald, he's on the gym at Fayetteville State. He has a school named after him as well. Jimmy Ray, Mark Smith, Larry Tieri, DeMarcus Tank Tyler, Demetrius Underwood, he came out in 1995, one of my classmates, and Doug Wilkerson. These names are just the first class. This is our inaugural year. The plan is to do this every year and induct more success stories outside of football. Unfortunately, baseball wasn't big. Track was pretty big, but we don't have those people yet, but the school is still here, and you guys have access to all of the success and the future of our school. So, just making sure that you know what you can do to help this situation. If you're a business owner, we have a souvenir book that you can put your business information in. Anyone that doesn't know the history of the school can participate in that, share their class, share their business name. They can just say congratulations to the Hall of Famers. I think that should be the conclusion of my talk.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I'll just say, I think under the players, everybody that's under the players either played or coached in the NFL, and that was one of your criterias in that, in first class that you had?
For the first class.
So, they played in the NFL.
To include their community contribution as well.
15 people, all right. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you so much.
Madam Manager, that takes us to the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Do there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Please identify yourself or make an motion in a second.
Jeanette Council, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Toni Stewart, I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? We do a roll call by Madam Clerk. Did we ever get Mr. Evans on the phone? Okay.
I can conduct a roll call, but without Commissioner Evans, it's not a remote meeting.
All of those in favor?
That is unanimous. Thank you.
Keep me straight. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. That brings us to item number four, which are our public hearings. We'll begin this evening with a public hearing on the draft Community Development Prior Year 2022 Annual Action Plan. And I'm gonna welcome our Community Development Director, Ms. Dee Taylor.
Good evening. What you have before you is a draft copy of the Annual Action Plan. This is what we're required to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in order for the county to continue receiving our entitlement funding on an annual basis. The entitlement funding that I am speaking of is our Community Development Block Grant Funds and our Home Investment Partnership Funds. Now, in previous years, we would receive our allocations, our actual allocations from HUD months before our program year begins, but we have not received that, so the amounts that you have in the action plan are just estimates. So, we're anticipating receiving approximately $858,000 in Community Development Block Grant and $396 in Home Investment Partnership. And again, that's just averaging it since we have not received our allocations yet. The Annual Action Plan is basically a document that identifies our funding resources and how we plan to address the priority needs in our community. And when I say priority needs, I mean housing, homelessness, special needs activities, community development activities such as public services, public facilities, infrastructure, and economic development activities. So, these are the main projects and activities that we plan to use the funding for. This document was published on the Community Development website, as well as distributed throughout all the eight town halls. We've also attended each of the town hall meetings and presented information on the action plan, as well as current programs that's available in our department. We, also, an ad was placed in the local newspaper informing citizens about the Annual Action Plan. The comment period will run for a 30-day period, and so tonight, we're just asking the board to hold a public hearing to allow for public review, public input, as well as taking any input you have on the plan.
Anybody got any questions or comments?
Madam Manager, if you give us the procedure for our public hearings before we open it?
Yes, sir. For this portion of the public hearing, each speaker will be asked to come forward and give their name and their address at the lectern, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes.
With that, we will open the public hearing for the draft Community Development 2022 Annual Action Plan. Are there any speakers, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, there are no speakers.
Then I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion to accept the draft Community Development 2022 Annual Action Plan.
I make a motion that we approve the draft Community Development 2022 Annual Action Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, that will take us to our rezoning cases.
Yes, sir. This evening, Mr. Rawls Howard is out of town, so our Deputy Director, David Moon, will be stepping in. Our first case is case zoning 22-30030.
Good evening. David Moon, Deputy Director of Planning and Inspections. The first case is a request to rezone property along Cumberland Road, generally south of the city of Fayetteville. The applicant is Gary and Terry Sikoni. The agent is George Rose, and the request is to rezone the property from R10 Residential to CP Plan Commercial District for approximately about .37 acres on that south side of Cumberland Road. In terms of other uses in the surrounding area, it's predominantly single-family home and commercial properties, as well as office and daycare activities. The zoning on abutting properties is R10 Residential and in the nearby area, either CP Commercial or C3 Commercial, which is a defunct zoning category, which is now similar to the General C Commercial. There are no sewer lines that are available to the property. There are water lines running across the north side of the road in front of the property. The soils are generally good. The site is located within the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan, and one of the policies in the plan requires the central sewer be available for heavy commercial. After discussions with the applicant with the proposed commercial zoning, staff had felt that the request was too intensive for the location. The applicant agreed to lower the intensity of the request and submitted a letter asking for the C2 Commercial, which is more neighborhood-oriented. Next slide shows the character of the surrounding area. This is a view from across the street, view from the west, from the north, the east, and then the recommendations. The staff initially recommended denial, but with the change in the application to the lower intensity use of C2, staff doesn't object to the request. The planning board considered the application and recommended to deny the CP Commercial, but recommends the C2 Commercial, as was requested by the applicant. That completes my presentation.
Are there any questions or comments? If not, Madam Manager, if you read our policy as to public hearings on zoning cases?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Arguments by the proponents and opponents shall be limited to a maximum of 10 minutes for each side. If arguments are presented by a group representative, those comments shall be limited to a maximum period of five minutes. If there is no group representative, each speaker shall be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the 10-minute time limit is attained. Rebutts will only be permitted at the discretion of the chairman with a maximum of one three-minute presentation by each side. Thank you.
Thank you. As to zoning case 220030, we will open the public hearing. Are there any speakers?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we have one speaker in favor. No speakers in opposition. Our speaker in favor is Mr. George Rose.
Mr. Rose.
Good evening. George Rose, 1206 Longleaf Drive here in Fayetteville. I'm the engineer representing the owners, Gary and Terry Sikoni, and as Mr. Moon said, we agree with the staff recommendation now to lower the request from CP to C2P, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about the case.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Okay.
There are no other speakers?
There are no further speakers.
Then we will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion. Well, okay, so in terms of this, it would be to remove, to move to deny the rezoning request from R10 Residential District to CP Plan Commercial District and approve the Joint Planning Board's recommendation to rezone from R10 to C2P Plan Service and Retail District, which is a more restrictive zoning, and find that the C2P district is consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan and the Cumberland Road Business Plan and is in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning for this location.
Second.
Well, you gonna make that motion?
Sure. I'll make the motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Lancaster Council. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. That will take us to zoning case 220031.
Again, David Moon, Deputy Director of Planning and Inspections. The next case involves a property that's located just to the west of Sampson County, located on John Nunnery Road. The applicant is Jerry Cashwell. The request is to change the zoning from A1 Agriculture to R40 Residential District. The intent is to develop single-family homes on 3.52 acres. The applicant is actually trying to recombine two parcels. One is small, not able to achieve the minimum acres necessary for A2. So, after rezoning to R40, his intent is to split the property into two lots that are about 40,000 square feet each. In the surrounding area, it's typically farmland, wooded lands, platted, single-family residential uses. The zoning shows that the surrounding areas are predominantly A1, as well as the R40 to the south, southeast of the property. This map shows the general character of the area from a larger perspective, with the residential subdivisions to the southeast and southwest. The soils are typically good on the site. There are no water or sewer lines that are available. The site's located in the Stedman Land Use Plan on land designated agriculture. The request is consistent with the land use plan. Both the staff and the Joint Planning Board recommend approval. These slides show you the character surrounding the area of the property. That completes the presentation. I'll address any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we open the public hearing. Are there any speakers, Madam Clerk?
We have one speaker this evening in favor. No speakers in opposition. In favor is Mr. Jerry Cashwell.
Mr. Cashwell.
Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you. I'm Jerry Cashwell, 1012 John Nunnery Road. Not proposing to do any other development, not proposing to build anything. This request involves the site that I live on, just over three-quarters of an acre, and my parents' property, both of which deceased this past July, about two and a half acres. So, we're just trying to straighten the property line and include an outbuilding on my parcel. Again, you know, we're not proposing to build anything or do anything different once there, so I'm available if you have any questions.
Anybody got any questions or comments? All right, thank you. Are there any other speakers?
There are no further speakers.
I will close the public comment period, and I will entertain the motion unless anyone has any questions or comments.
I'll read it.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, in case ZOIN 220031, I move to approve the rezoning request from A1 Agriculture District to R40- Agriculture District to R-40 Residential District, and find that the request is consistent with the Stedman Land Use Plan. Approval of the request is reasonable and in the public interest because R-40 Residential District would allow residential uses at a density that would be compatible in the harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. All of those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, thank you. That will take us to case 22032.
Again, David Moon, Deputy Director of Planning and Inspections. The last zoning case before you is generally located in the south-central area of the county, just to the west of the Cape Fear River. The applicant is Kyle and Marie Dixon. The request is to change the zoning from A-1 Agricultural District to R-40 Residential District. The intent is to build a single-family residential development. The site has approximately 20.6 acres. In terms of activities currently in the surrounding area, to the south and immediate west of the property, it's primarily wooded land. To the northeast of the property is Grace Creek Airport. There is residential subdivision to the east that is zone R-40, and then single-family homes generally to the northwest and east of Highway 87. The zoning area currently is predominantly A-1, R-40, R-40A, and rural residential. There is no water or sewer that's available to the site. The soils are typically good in that area. It is located in the Grace Creek Water and Sewer District. Located in the South Central Land Use Plan, the site is assigned a farmland designation. Next slide gives an illustration of the character of the surrounding area, including the site. Both staff and the joint planning board will recommend approval, finding it consistent with the land use plan and the general character and harmony of the area. That completes my presentation. Address any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions or comments of Mr. Moon? Mr. Keith?
Thank you. Mr. Moon, traditionally, when these, a lot of these development sites, there was a reason why they had to come in as a zero-lot line. Was this brought in as a zero-lot line request?
Yes.
Okay.
Back in year December of 2020.
The current one?
Correct.
Is the current one as a zero-lot line just because of the way that they, okay, it is not. So they have to adhere to R-40 standards?
Correct.
100%. The setbacks?
No, the site is currently zoned A-1.
A-1, correct.
They're requesting R-40.
Right, but if they were to be granted R-40, they could not put this in as a zero-lot line development?
At the time of a subdivision application, our codes would allow them to make the request for a zero-lot line development.
And did the developer, the applicant, request that?
An application for a subdivision plan has not been submitted. That's a question you'll have to ask the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I will open the public hearing, and as for the, as the chairman has the ability to do this, what happens is there were seven people in opposition, which would put you well over the limit of the 10 minutes. So what I'm gonna do is actually give you 14 minutes, two minutes per person, unless, and I saw some people with the same last name, so if you wanted to put it back down to less than five, you get the three minutes or whatever, but because it's seven, everybody's gonna get two minutes. So instead of having 10, I'm giving the opposition 14 minutes. And on the four side, I do understand, Mr. Charleston, Attorney Charleston came in late, but out of fairness, by giving them more time, I'm gonna allow you, I think there's only three speakers on that side, so you will still be up under the 10 minutes. So, Madam Clerk, if you call the first, I'll open the public hearing. You call the first speaker.
Okay, again, we have four speakers in favor, seven in opposition. Our first speaker in favor?
Can you give me one moment? I think Mr. Evans is calling, calling in. Yes, sir. Yes. Okay, hold on a minute, and they're gonna try to call you because they tried to call you. So hold on one second. Okay, do you want to try to call him? Well, he was on the phone with me.
Hello?
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
He's now president, Mr. Chair.
So that then makes a remote meeting, and you're gonna have to identify yourself as you speak on that. So Commissioner Evans, we are at our third rezoning case, case Zon 220032, and Madam Clerk was about to call the first speaker.
Our first speaker in favor is Mr. Kyle Dixon.
If you come to the microphone.
Good evening.
Hello?
My name is Kyle Dixon. I reside at 6375.
Excuse me one minute, Mr. Dixon. Can you take him back to three minutes? Ask him to mute his phone so he can hear.
Commissioner Evans, if you could mute your, mute your phone, we can hear you when you speak. Can you hear?
Yes, I can, I can hear a little bit, but let me ask you, where are we at, where are we at in the agenda?
We're at the zoning case, the third zoning case, zoning case 220032. We have not gotten down to items of business yet, so this is the last rezoning case. We're about to have the public hearing on those rezoning cases. And yeah, if you can speak into that microphone. And so if you can mute, we'll get right back to you.
All right. Good evening. My name is Kyle Dixon. I reside at 6375 Tabor Church Road, and I'm going to defer my time to Mr. Charleston.
No, you got your three minutes. I allowed him to sign up. I'm not doing the deferment. If you want to speak for your three minutes, that's fine. We made the kind of ability for everybody. I'm just trying to be fair to everybody.
I'll speak. That's fine. I purchased this 20 acres on Butler Nursery Road, and all I'm asking is for R-40. That's one house per one acre, and that's, that's all I need. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, Madam?
Our second speaker is Marie Dixon.
My name is Mary Dixon. I reside at 6375 Tabor Church Road.
Marie, I'm sorry.
Mary.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mary Dixon.
Yeah. That's my husband, Kyle. As he stated, we are asking for rezoning of, to R-40, but the intentions of subdivision development. We've met all the requirements of the planning board, and therefore we ask for the support for this rezoning.
Thank you.
Our third speaker in favor is Mr. Breeden Blackwell.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow Commissioners. My name is Breeden Blackwell. I reside at 1201 Haymount Court, Fayetteville. My comments will be very short. We've met every requirement of the planning board. We have been to the planning staff, been to the planning board, and if I had my book, you would see he meets every criteria the planning board has for that region of the county. Will meet all the specifications. This case was before you, a year ago. We went back and revised it because you had some concerns, and Mr. Keith has, has a concern. I know about zero-lot line. We not having that at all. It's not even in the plan. So I asked you for your support, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Our final speaker in favor is Mr. Jonathan Charleston.
Good evening, Jonathan Charleston, 201 Hay Street in Fayetteville, North Carolina. Chairman Adams and members of the board, I'm here tonight on behalf of the owner of the property located at Butler Nursery Road. You see my clients, Kyle Dixon and Marie Dixon, and they have an interest in developing a 20-acre tract of land. First thing they'd like to point out, Commissioner Keith, there will be no zero-lot line development on this site, and I think there was some mix-up the last time that this came. Something was written on the plat that said zero-lot line. That is not the case. There is no intention to do so. You will not see that if you guys are willing to approve this request. This is a 20-acre tract of land that's going to be developed into a residential subdivision. As Mr. Blackwell said, this tract of land and this request fit perfectly in the South Central Land Use Plan that was developed by the Board of Commissioners in 2015. Just as many of the speakers said at the joint planning board, all of the comments about the site and the rezoning had to do more with noise and things of that nature, not to be caused by the future residents, but noise that would be caused by the airport and all of the things that were objectional about the airport and the effect of the airport on the prospective residents. That's not a criteria for, for rezoning in this particular category, and I would ask you, if you take a minute during the presentations, just to look at the minutes of the meeting that the joint planning board, there was nothing, no points brought up that suggested that this request was inconsistent with the R-40 designation or inconsistent with the rural nature of the community that's out there. What I will say to you tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is that the 20 families that are likely to live in these 20 homes that will be developed on this lot will not tip the scale in any way in Grace Creek. There are not any water problems, flooding problems in this area. The staff report indicates that this, this particular site does not have any flooding issues at all. I know that also was a concern that this board has. And so what I would say, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, is I respectfully request that you consider allowing the Dixon family to develop their property to its highest and best use, and I'll be available to answer any questions that you may have. But again, there was nothing that wasn't found to be objectionable at the planning board, and none of the folks speaking in opposition stated any reason that would cause this property not to be rezoned as R-40. Thank you.
Our first speaker in opposition is Terri Smith.
I am Terri Smith. I live at 4328 Marshwood Lake Road, Fayetteville. I have property that joins the property in question that is the rezon request is for. This property once belonged to my grandfather, but I have trees and five acres there that will border it, and of course, I have a lot of concern and questions about where the water drainage will go. And I want to make this quick. I know that other speakers are gonna cover these things, and I don't want to take away from them at all, but I want to say that Grace Creek, and particularly that area where we live, has given so much. It's a very diverse area already. It's sandwiched between Trailer Park, McDowell Trailer Park, we have the airport, we have Dalton's Ridge Residential Development, we have farmhouses and farmland, and that's what that is. And if I could speak just quickly, I would say, thank you, thank you, because it was a great victory, a watershed moment in my family's life and my life whenever it was voted down last fall. We had never been so happy, and we appreciate that, and, and hope and pray that it'll happen again. And on behalf of the resident bear that lives there, that will struggle to live there, they're disappearing every day, the bear, the deer. The gentleman who just spoke said, you know, won't infect or impact Grace Creek. I don't think they've been out there lately. There's overdevelopment. Grace Creek is hurting in a number of ways. It needs many, many things, but it does not need 20 houses on that property. And the bear, the deer, the wildlife, and all the, all the things that are disappearing before our eyes every day, and not even to mention the overcrowded schools and the need for children to grow up in a place where a community identity existed as it did for so many years, and a wonderful place to live. For maximization of profit, we are seeing it disappear daily. We don't have the connections that some people do, but we have the love for the community and the love for the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second speaker in opposition is Carla Giles.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Carla Giles. I live at 7145 Butler Nursery. I am like, really like, the only house right there that's kind of by itself that you seen on there in my picture of the 20 acres is kind of more or less right beside me. But I just want to say that I've been there for about 27 years, and it has been in our family for a long time, but I think everybody here really forget about the little people. It's nice and peaceful back there. I've been there for 27, but everything a lot of the attorneys said is not true. When we had the hurricane there, I was swimming through to go to work at Food Line through an ocean down the driveway. It was like my car completely stalled out, and then I got it started finally. So the water is horrible there. So that's not true. It goes completely across the road, highway, coming up off that drive. I get water delivered every week, so the water is bad there. Also, I just hate to see, so many developers have come up and they're building on top of each other, and I've got so many animals over there. It's a sad thing to see all that go. I mean, it really is. They're over there. It's like they're all bunched in there because so many houses are being built. But I just want everybody to take and think that 20 whales, 20 septic tanks, all these people, and you really do not know who later on is going to be there, what your neighbors are going to be like, how loud are they, what hours in the night are you gonna be woke up. People don't think about that. I just think a lot of it is just coming to where people are just getting more and more, just money, money, as much money and as many houses as they can stack on each other. I just hope y'all think about the little people. This was denied last year, and I hope it's still denied this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our third speaker in opposition is Mr. Scott Smith.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Scott Smith at 5219 Farmall Drive. You know, my first issue I have was about the joint planning board. You know, real quick, you know, we had a situation where I stood up and I talked about safety. I talked about the noise, the things that concerned me as a representative from the airport, and after I sat down, there was one member that spoke on my behalf, said things that I didn't say, said things that weren't exactly true, and I sent an email outlining this, this in detail. You know, when things are not said that are, that are honest, and I don't have a chance to, you know, to rebuttal those points, you know, it's not fair and potentially sways outcomes of, of people's votes. The minutes prove against what he said, and so the email is there, and you can see that in detail. My main concern is and always been safety. You know, I, I teach people to fly for a living, and I watch things that happened that on some scale are extremely dangerous, but we do a very good job at it. You know, we, we had in 2021, 4,784 takeoff and landings, you know, and it's all student pilots. That's just students. And if you, if you look in the last decade, 469 reported accidents happened within the traffic pattern of an airport. This subdivision will be within the traffic pattern. So the southeast, 2015 South Central Land Use Plan does a good job of protecting Fayetteville Airport, but it doesn't recognize a small airport in Grace Creek. If you put those same protections on our airport, this is within Zone 1 of a Fayetteville Airport, which you do not allow residential development. The 2015 South Central Land Use uses words about this type zone, protect human life, critical areas, safety and the protection of human life. Airport impact zones 1, 2, and 5, this would be in 1, which is the most detrimental, where the recommended land uses should prohibit residential development or privately-owned airport. I understand that changes some people's aspect, but it doesn't change the risk that's involved.
I'll let you finish that sentence.
It doesn't change the risk that's associated with flying aircraft at a few hundred feet above homes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our fourth speaker in opposition is Elaine Humphrey.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Elaine Humphrey from 7509 Wilkins Drive. I'm also here in opposition to this plan. Unfortunately, I think the Unfortunately, I think the attorney that came out and spoke does not come to the property every day. Working at that property, I'm at the airport, I'm a flight instructor. And working at that property every day for the past four years, I have seen quite a bit of flooding. My concern, though, is with the safety of the houses that are going to be built there. Teaching people to fly is a very dangerous profession. I've been in quite a few scary type of incidents. And when you teach pilots to fly and they are taking off and they have a potential issue, you're going to teach them to land directly ahead or within 30 degrees of the takeoff. The runway is directly south, and it's runway 17, so it runs directly south straight ahead at this property. If there's an engine out situation, it's going to be straight ahead or within 30 degrees. Right now, I can teach my students to go straight ahead or to both sides. There is a field to the right, which is the field that they're talking about, and there's a field to the left. However, if this development is built to the right-hand side, I will have to teach my students, go to the left or choose the road that goes down this development to the right. I would hate for this to be a Saturday afternoon with kids outside playing, and I have a student who's 17 years old deciding that the road looks like the safest place to land, and they choose the road to land on. Heaven forbid that there are houses there. When we go take off to the north, there are two fields on either side. Neither of them have houses. When we turn to the right when we take off, there are two fields there. We are able to miss the entire elementary school because there are two giant fields to land in. But at this property, if you put those 20 houses there, you are directly affecting those people's safety and the safety of the pilots that we teach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jack Kane.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jack Kane. 7005 Butler Nursery Road. I was born and raised on that land. My daddy bought it 1935, 85 years ago. There's no difference about that. Talking about the water situation, we do have a water situation. Rain runoff and drinking water. I have to drink out of a plastic jug every day of my life, and that's not nice. I don't see where 22 houses or 20, whatever it wants, would really help our school system or our community. And they knew it's R-40 when they bought this piece of land. They knew there was going to be a fight, and there was, and we ain't quit yet until it end. So just hope people use good common sense and think about the neighborhood there, not just one developer that wants to put a bunch of houses there. So that's all I got to say, and thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Ray Gain.
Ray Kane, 7396 Sally Lane. My land joins the 20 acres they're talking about.
Wait a minute, which one?
Pardon?
The 20 acres?
Yeah.
Yeah, right here. Let's see it.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know what you were talking about.
Okay. It's all family all the way around it. I had a lot to say, but I sure don't have much time to do it. I'll get right to the biggest part of my concerns is a house per acre. Where are the kids playing at? There's, you can't, who would want to put, build a house on an acre of land and put their kids in it? What do they do? Stay in the house all day and go to school during the day? Come home, stay in the house? You can't do anything on acre of land. In town or somewhere, I might could see this where they have parks to go to or ball fields to go to. There's none of that in Grace Creek. That's all, that's all farmland. My sister was talking about the water. She, her place is on the south. That's where all the water drains. It's going to go there. They have went and offered $5,000 to my neighbor back here to drain their water to his property, which he turned down. So there is a water problem. Another water problem is there's no water there. If you drill a well, we're not on city or county water or sewer. If you drill a well, you can't drink the water because of the genetics. We get our water from DuPont. We have for the last two, two and a half years now. And, you know, that's, I don't see how they can even build a house in Grace Creek until they get this water stuff straightened out. Sewer, like I said, there's no sewer there. An acre of land, you're going to drill your well and put it in your neighbor's septic tank? I don't know. And, but my biggest thing is the kids. There's nothing for them to do. The first thing people do when they come out of town like that, they buy their kids four-wheelers.
I'm going to let you finish, because I had you go over there and do it.
Sir?
You can finish that sentence, because I did have you go over there.
When people move out of town down there, the first thing they do, because there's a neighborhood about two miles down the road from it, they buy their kids four-wheelers and stuff. There's nowhere for them to ride, not on acre of land.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Mr. Donald Pate.
What was that last name, Madam Clerk?
Pate, P-A-T-E.
Name's Donald Pate, 7243 Butler Nursery Road. I attended the first meeting they had with this, and my main concern was erosion. Behind me, there's a pretty good little hill there, and if they cut that undergrowth off, it's going to flood me out. And last fall, Tim Evans come to my house, offered me $5,000 to put a barnum around my property so the water wouldn't come through my backyard. Well, if I put a barnum up, all I'm doing is diverting water on my neighbors, and I don't want no part of that. So undoubtedly, they know they've got a problem, because he told me, he said, if you don't let me put the barnum in, we're going to lose Lot Number Nine in this corner and have to put a detention pond. Well, if they put a detention pond, all that is a mosquito pit for me. So my main concern is the erosion, and they know they've got a problem with it, or they wouldn't offer me $5,000 to build a barnum around me to divert water on my neighbors. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
There are no further speakers.
There are no further speakers. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, anybody have any questions or comments? Mr. Keith? I got a couple. For the applicant, I don't, I don't really care if it's the attorney or the applicant itself. I've got some questions.
Whichever one you want to come up, you got to come to the microphone. And maybe both of you want to walk up there, because you might want to ask a question to the other one.
I specifically, as everybody knows, Grace Creek is a very popular area for development. We get, we get a lot up here. As it comes around, I have supported R-40 with conditions as they go. And one thing that has, that we have to keep in mind is, the only reason that these properties come up to us is because people in Grace Creek are willing to sell. At, they're willing to sell. So they come up and they do these. But my consistency is, at one acre, at one acre, you still have a character, and I know I just am in disagreement with one of the speakers, but there is still a character of a rural setting even at one acre, but I have requirements. And my requirements are that if it is R-40, that is not zero lot line. And you agree that that will not be, with conditions, you cannot put a zero lot line development in there. The other, the other R-40 condition is that we have setbacks that are equal to R-40 setbacks for everything, to the front, to the back, to the sides. The, the other thing is, in, in R-40, in R-40, there is a clause that allows you to build the number of houses on that property, even if they are less than one acre of 40,000 square feet per lot. Will all of the lots be at least one acre? Or at least 40,000 square feet?
You can use the microphone. You got to use the microphone.
Will, will all of them be at least? That is correct. Okay. On the plot, if that is part of the condition that moves forward, and I don't, I don't know how the vote's going to go, but does the builder agree to all of those conditions? Okay. I've heard a number of issues about the water runoff. Has it been engineered or has it been looked at?
It is midway through, but I put a halt on that. That was, I haven't done no more engineering since.
Because you want to see what happens, happens here? Okay. Understood. That's the only questions I had, had for you. To Mr., I believe it was Mr. Smith, from the airport?
Yes, sir.
I, I read, I read your email, and I remember you speaking before at the other time. But this property was for sale. And if it is as much a concern that, that the airport requires this property to be a secondary landing zone, why wouldn't you have purchased it yourself?
It was never publicly for sale.
Well, okay. Well, it's, somebody sold it.
Right. You know, I don't know how it happened, but there was never a for-sale sign. There was never any advertisements for sale. It just changed hands and without any knowledge.
And, and I understand. Sir, I'm going to let the chairman recognize you if, if, when it comes to that part. But when this comes, there comes to be a certain amount of, a period where you cannot restrict so many areas around you just so your training of pilots. Now, you can convince me otherwise, but it sounds to me like what you really want is for nothing ever to happen to that piece of property.
No, sir, no. What we're looking for is similar protections that go on at all municipal-type airports, not the exact same.
But he can build eight dwelling, right now, today, he could go out and build eight, and we all hear, oh, this guy has so many houses out there. The difference is really 10 houses.
Right.
Is that what we're talking about. So he could still put homes in there that could affect the safety of your flight plan.
He could. He could absolutely do that.
Yeah, okay. And I'm granted, I'm trying, there's a lot of moving parts.
There is, yes, sir.
And I'm trying to understand it as best I can. Okay, I just wanted to clarify on that, and thank you for the information.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Anyone else?
All right. I will tell you, everybody knows how consistent I am with Grace Creek when there is no water and no sewer. I will entertain a motion. I guess, Mr. Keith, you had yours with your conditions or whoever.
Well, okay, Mr. Chair. In the case of zoning 22-032, I move to approve the rezoning request from A-1 Agriculture District, R-40 Residential District. And find that the request is consistent with the South Central Cumberland Land Use Plan. Approval of this request is reasonable and in the public interest because the R-40 Residential District would allow residential issues, uses at this density, and would be compatible to the harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning, provided conditions were met that were stated earlier. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. We got to do a roll call.
For the record, you are, you're offering this as a conditional zoning.
Yes.
And, and the applicant has agreed to that, but the conditions, if you would state those for, for her minutes.
That the conditions are that this is not a zero lot line development, that there is only one house allowed per every 40,000 square feet. The setbacks are consistent with R-40.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Madam Clerk? We got to do a roll call, because Mr. Evans is on.
Was there a second? With the conditions?
Yes.
Thank you. I accepted his conditions.
Yes.
Commissioner Lancaster, your vote?
I am familiar with his conditions.
Commissioner Council, your vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
No.
Chairman Adams?
No.
Commissioner Keith?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Commissioner Evans, your vote, sir?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That motion passes. All right. Thank you so very much. Thanks for everyone, for their attention. I'll give you, those who want to leave, an opportunity to leave so you can carry on. Woo, oh, you okay? That will take us, Madam Manager, to an item of business, which is the downtown museum presentation.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this was an item that was presented at the agenda session last Thursday. There was a motion made to set aside 45,000, 450,000.
I was about to say.
For Phase 1 cost. And so it was not a unanimous vote. So this evening, we have invited back the project director, Dr. Dove Evans, and the project coordinator, Mr. William Cassell, to do a very short presentation again this evening.
And I think Mr. Van Gheens is here, too. I see him. He's there, too. And I think she said a short presentation, is that what you said, Madam Manager?
Yes, sir.
All right.
You need my motion first.
I'm going to give him a short presentation right there.
A little longer than last time.
Well, I have a good chance to see that one. Yeah. Yeah, he's going to do it. He's going to do that. And I see you didn't bring Pasquale, so.
I did not. It's just me.
It's just you? I would take you, okay.
There you go.
But you got to have the energy that she had.
Absolutely.
Let me see if you can bring that energy that she had.
Good evening, Commissioners. Glad to be here. I'm Dr. Dove Evans, and obviously I want to talk to you today about a very important project. I'm excited because the project that I want to talk to you about, the Black History Museum, it contains several parts. And one of the things I'm really excited about is talking to you today about the unique opportunity that we have today to tell Black American history with Fayetteville at the very center of that story. I'm excited about that because this, the magnitude of this project is going to be such that it needs to garner national attention. This particular project that I'm talking about tonight is the type of project that needs to be a must-see stop on the Civil Rights Tour. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the details with regards to this project, and one of the main point of this project is going to be the Black History Museum. The Black History Museum I'm talking about this evening is a fully interactive, state-of-the-art museum that tells the story of Black Americans in Fayetteville. With this particular museum, it's going to be the type of museum that pulls the stories from the community and inserts that into the actual museum, making it a very personal story that we'll be telling. The museum that we're actually looking to have built is going to be by Sir David Ajay and Associates, who builds structures all around the world. And yes, I said Sir David Ajay. With this particular project, the national spotlight that it garners will be not only positive, but it needs to be a game changer. We expect other cities of, of the like to actually look at this particular structure, at this museum, and be inspired to do something along the same lines. And again, Fayetteville, Cumberland County at the very front of that, taking the reins. Yet another part of this project is the Market House. The Market House, I know, has been a source of contention for quite some time, and what we want to do is recontextualize and reconceptualize the Market House as, and transform it from a point of, like, division into a point of unity. In doing so, it'll actually work in concert with the Black History Museum and what we plan to do with Historic Downtown as well, where we plan to install thematic changes that kind of tie the whole thing together, making it not just individual structures that work individually, but in concert with one another. These three different structures will work in concert with the existing memorial project as well as the corridor projects as well. One thing to note is that with these projects, again, the Black History Museum, the Market House, as well as Historic Downtown and the little thematic change that we'll make, it will be something that, again, tells the story, the intimate story of, again, Black Americans in Fayetteville at the very center of that story. Again, the museum is going to be composed of several different compartments. I'll just go down just a few briefly. Number one, it'll go over the history. The history is starting from, all the way from Charles Chestnut all the way to J. Cole. Again, telling the history is going to be extremely personal, because like I said earlier, we want to pull some of those stories from Black Americans in the Fayetteville community and put those into the museum, again, making it unique. Also, we'll have different components, like the voice, the authors, where we'll want to compose a special authors' museum and a theater, the music and spoken word component. One thing to take note with all these different components is there'll be year-long programming that will attract adults as well as children. That makes it special because it's not just something you go and look at, but you interact with. Again, and it's a year-long programming that is also for the community that they can utilize as well. So again, it serves for, it's multipurpose. The community engagement is more so of the how, which is really important. If nothing else, when you think of the how, it's engagement, engagement, engagement. So again, like I said earlier, pulling the Black stories from the actual community and inserting it into the actual museum. Then you have the charrette, which is something that we would love to conduct as well, you know, giving us an opportunity to actually know, giving us an opportunity to actually kind of talk about some of the concerns and some of the ideas that the community would have with regards to this museum. Of course, utilizing the DOJ spirit recommendations as well. Putting together a twenty-person advisory board, again, would be just yet another way we can incorporate the community in getting feedback as we're putting this together. Of course, working with key groups and individuals is gonna be a huge component when we're building the museum.
You're disconnected.
Excuse me, one more.
Yep.
Uh, Charleston, Commissioner Evans said he got disconnected.
Please leave your message for.
Maybe that's why.
He hung up on me.
And we let Rick do it, right?
No, I was, I was just doing read out, it's not connecting. Commissioner Evans? All right? Yes, sir.
Can you back on?
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Sorry.
That's not a problem. So again, the community engagement piece is gonna be huge when we're actually putting together this.
You need, you need to mute your phone, Charles. Okay.
All right. Again, so the community engagement is gonna be pivotal when putting together this museum as well. And the engagement piece is, like I said, important, not only to make sure that we incorporate, again, you know, the thought in the community itself, but also, that's a piece that's gonna ensure that we take as long as we need to when putting together this museum, because again, that is gonna be the key. That's what makes it personalized, that's what makes it special, that's what makes it unique. Again, this is a brief file about Sir David Agee, and like I said, one of the big things is like, he builds structures all around the world, and one of the different processes that I just said earlier was the engagement piece. So Agee Associates, his own firm, has their own engagement process, where they work with, you know, key figures in the community, and again, they allow, they allow individuals to, again, you know, tell their stories and things of that nature, because that is the level of detail that they incorporate in all of their projects all around the world. So you've probably already seen some of his work. If nothing else, you're probably familiar with the African-American Museum in DC, that's his as well. So structures all around the world, and they, they are extremely detailed, from talking to the people, all the way to looking to the soil that, you know, that they're gonna be building the structure on. They leave no stone unturned when making sure that whatever they build in the community, it is specific to that community. All right. Some of the partners, you know, that we have had the opportunity to work with and plan to work with for this project, I won't go over every single one, but just a few, for example, Lonny Bunch, the executive director for the Smithsonian. Again, his ties and connections would be pivotal when working with this project. Dr. Anaya Thompson, over at Arizona State University, again, she's another one who's, you know, agreed to be an advisor with our theater program, for example. And then obviously, working with, you know, universities here, like, you know, Duke University Center for Documentary Studies, as well as working with faculty with Fayetteville State University. Again, with this particular project, if you want it to be world-renowned, we're gonna have to collaborate with the best of the best, and that's what we plan on doing when putting, putting something like this together. Oh, and one last one, too, Clark Constructions, who also, you know, did the construction on the museum there in DC as well, so we're all versed on how to put together a project of this stature. Our process, just, you know, a quick rundown on the process, again, engaging with the people, like I said before, which would be extremely important to putting together any structure here in Fayetteville, creating a very detailed plan in terms of making sure that we work with the, you know, the key figures in the community, making sure that, again, we do our due diligence with ensuring we have the buy-in in moving forward with this project, collecting the compelling stories to make it a very unique project from the citizens of Fayetteville, and incorporating that into the actual museum, becoming a national leader. So again, this hasn't really been done before, so doing something along these lines would definitely place a positive spotlight on this particular community. And then, of course, at the end of this particular first phase, producing conceptual designs of what this project will actually look like, so. Here's the, you know, the rough budget for just the first phase only, and the ask for today would be, you know, half of, you know, that total that you see down there at the very bottom, so. And in conclusion, again, so the story of Fayetteville's Black community will be told through reverence. So again, what we want to make sure is that, as important as this project is, it's not really anything without, you know, the community of Fayetteville to be on board and to actually contribute to this particular process, because again, that's what makes it unique. And as I asked before, why not Fayetteville? Why not Cumberland County?
That's right.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Gheens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have with us Bill Cassell as well, who represents Joel Fleischman, the Fleischman family, and we're happy to go through, this was a fast overview, and again, this is a concept in its earliest stages, but I think more than anything, what is inspiring around this are the partners that have expressed an interest, a belief that this conversation, yes, centered on and heavily influenced by those from Fayetteville and Cumberland County, but this would be a conversation and a museum and programming experience that expands well beyond that to cover the broad spectrum of the quest for equality and justice.
Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Keith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, this is the first time I have, I have seen this, and I am very well aware that I am a Caucasian male talking about a Black History Museum, but I feel like as an elected official, that I still have some questions, and my main question is the process. I've been a commissioner for thirteen years, and this kind of, I was not aware that this was even in the pipeline. So when it came about, I guess my biggest problem with the process is, this came before us at an agenda session, which was really just one working day before today, because we had the Easter weekend. This is kind of fast-tracking half a million dollars of public taxpayer funding on speculation. Has this been going on for a while? Have we been talking about this, and I've just totally been out of it?
What we brought forward was the initial concept, and we were bringing it forward to the county and bringing it forward to the city, putting it, saying, this is what it would take to do something like this. And yes, there's been, over the last two to three years, a variety of smaller conversations and evolution of this idea. And we brought it forward, and, you know, the county, after hearing it, has pushed, you know, moved it to the next.
Well, and I, I hear, I hear, and it's a great presentation, please, please don't even, how many African-American museums are there in the country?
I don't have a specific number, but it was probably in the forty to fifty range.
I mean?
Forty.
Forty or fifty? Okay. And we're gonna make this one unique by telling Fayetteville's story, is that the purpose?
It is, it is both unique in the sense of here, but more than anything, it is that programming component that would make it unique amongst all the others, and that being the inclusion of voice from architecture to photography to literature to the spoken word, and that's really the opportunity to theater.
Okay.
And that's the opportunity here to be unique.
All right, well, let's, let's take one step a little bit farther. This is just for, to see if it works, design, all the others. What is the average that, that a museum like this would, would cost?
It would, it, I mean, a museum is not an inexpensive structure.
I'm very well aware.
But at this point, we can't predict what the cost of the museum will be until, I mean, you know, you could throw numbers out, but they would be.
What's a bottom-line number?
I don't have a bottom-line number.
A million?
No, far more than that.
Well, then, where there's a bottom-line number?
But, but it's hard to give you a top-end number, because a top-end number is, you know, we don't know, the issue, the goal of the initial phase of the project is engagement.
Right.
The process is the point, and the, and the level of interest and enthusiasm will drive the size of the museum, which will drive the cost of the museum. The goals that we're setting for the process, for the entire rebranding of the downtown, for reconciling the Market House, the goals are, can, are audacious, are, you know, so that this will ultimately be a must-see stop on the Civil Rights Tours, that it will be, that it will impact the economic development of the, of the downtown, which will ripple throughout the community. That, because it will bring people to downtown, and it will, and ultimately, the hype-minded dimension of this entire project is that this will be a model for how a community reconciles its history with race. And not to get into the politics of race, but I think that that's an important topic.
Okay. I, I, I still, what we're doing is we're, I guess the other, is the city gonna be, you know, are they asking the city for the other?
They've talked to the city, I think they've had.
Okay.
Some, like, conversations.
So we're asking for basically nine-hundred thousand dollars to see if this is something that our community can support.
I, I would say, what would come out of this process is, at a minimum, is that civic engagement conversation, yes, you would receive that work by a globally-renowned architect who, to develop this, but importantly, beyond the museum, through this process, this is more than just the design, charrette, you have the community engagement, the feedback, the collection of stories, artifacts, and an inventory of what we're being told is a fragile, both oratory and physical history here in the community, amongst the Black community, and also a plan to integrate these items that would connect the corridor projects of the city and the memorials in town. So you end up with a multifaceted outcome, the, one of the largest deliverables being the plan for the museum itself.
And, and please do not get me wrong, I am not against the project, but I'd like to throw something out for you to consider. We are a military town, and there are a number of African-Americans who made significant contributions from the very beginning of this country's history, you know, from Christmas attacks at the Boston massacre. The first person by, by a lot of, by a lot of accounts was the first person killed in the American Revolution, was an African-American, is a sailor, former slave. You have Lieutenant Flapper, who was the first graduate of, of West Point. You had Sergeant, I'm a student in military history, so. There was a Sergeant Cantley from Fifty-fourth Massachusetts, who got the first Medal of Honor. We have so many people close in our town, Joel Klinik, Lawrence Joel was the first medic, African-American, given the Medal of Honor in Vietnam since the Spanish-American War. We have a clinic named after him. That story's not told. Not only the story of that, but we also have the story of Roscoe Robinson, who was the first general. We, we have Lloyd Austin, who came through Fort Bragg. Colin Powell was my general, I have a deep love for Colin Powell. But there were so many people that affected us in a community, and we could make ourselves unique. Instead of one of the forty, I would support, you know, this type of environment to make us unique, and if you really want to stop on the Civil Rights Tour, where could you find out how African-Americans had affected the history through the Tuskegee Airmen, the Triple Nickels, the smokejumpers of the Triple Nickels, Triple Nickels, as they went through? There's so many different ways that they have communicated, but there's not one place that they do it in the military. Thank you.
Well, you know, I would tell you that I would hope that the ASOM would have done that. Commissioner Counsel?
Hello? I'm ready to make a motion.
Hold a minute.
Go ahead. And a lot of your questions I had.
Okay.
And it was not the museum, but, but the infrastructure, whatever. I'm the reason that it's on the agenda tonight, okay?
Thank you, because it wouldn't have been if you, I wouldn't know.
Yeah, but I, I hadn't either, but I, I loved the idea, and the first thing I think about is the, the schoolchildren, education, a part of the whole process, so I've got some ideas. But anyway, I don't know how to, wait a minute. Usually, we have more information whenever we make a motion of that magnitude, but I would like to move that we set aside.
The four-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the proposed.
Four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the proposed African-American museum in Cumberland County.
Is there a second?
I will second.
I got either Commissioner Stewart or Commissioner Evans second, whichever one y'all. All right.
Mr. Chair, just a comment. My, my problem is the process.
I'll come right to you, Charles.
It is too fast, we have not discussed this, it has not gone through. I would support, I would support this, but I feel like subjecting nine-hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money to a presentation that we just had one day ago, basically, one working day ago, is too fast. I could support the, I would love to see the military component into it, but I, the process is too fast.
And I hope that's the civic engagement. Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Evans?
Um, yeah, you know, I think, my, my, my heart is hurting right now, and Jimmy is hurting because of the comments that you made. You're my boy, but listen to me.
He's my boy.
We used to have, how many African-American museums that they are in, in this country, or wherever they're located? That kind of disappointed me, and I almost liked you asking how many African-Americans are in Fayetteville. That wasn't right, man. That wasn't right at all. We did not have this kind of conversation, who was talking about the Civil War, you see? And everybody was, everybody was. I think that our citizens, I think that the city of Fayetteville, I think that the state of North Carolina, and we do not just take deserve that because it's right here in Fayetteville.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Fuck this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans.
Leave it, man.
All right. Commissioner Stewart?
I'm commenting to Commissioner Keith, it is fast. It is very fast, but I will say that it is long overdue. I think that when something moves like this, it's because it's been a matter of who will do it and when will it be done, which is why I support this.
Did you second my motion?
Yes, you got a second. Roll call, Madam.
Commissioner Lancaster, your vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Counsel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Absolutely.
Chairman Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Keith?
No.
Chairman, Commissioner Evans?
Yes, without a doubt.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, we'll be back in touch.
All right. That will take us to nominations and to the vice chairwoman, Human Relations Commission.
Thank you, Chairman Adams. The Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee recommends the nomination of Devin Trago, and that is for the, oh, for the Home and Community Care.
That's the Home and Community Care Block, okay.
Yes, and for the Human Relation Commission, there is one vacancy, and the Human Relation Commission recommends the nomination of Avron Flores.
All right. Are there any other nominations? All right. If not, then I will recess the Board of Commissioners meeting, and I will convene the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District, District. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. As you may recall, last Thursday at the agenda session, our county engineer presented a resolution that we need to apply for a grant for the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District. That grant application is due May second, and we're asking, the board actually approved the resolution under the consent agenda, we now need the Graves Creek Water and Sewer Governing Board to approve that resolution as well.
Okay. All right, if I can get a motion?
I'd like to go first.
Second.
It's been moved in second, anybody have any questions, comments? Madam Manager?
The, Commissioner Lancaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Counsel? Commissioner Stewart, yes. Chairman Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Keith?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Evans?
Oh, that's disappointing.
So, pardon me. So where are we now?
So that is passed.
Yay, nays.
That is unanimous.
Well, after this, we can go back to the unanimous, now that he's off the line, I guess. All right, so I will adjourn the Graves Creek Water and Sewer District, and I will convene the Norcross Water and Sewer District, Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. We, again, we're asking for the board to approve a resolution, so staff can apply for a grant for the Norcrests sanitary water and sewer system. This item was presented at the agenda session, it's been approved on your consent agenda, we just need the Governing Board in Norcrests to approve it this evening.
If I can get a motion?
I move that we approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
That is unanimous.
All right. I will adjourn the Norcross Water and Sewer District, and I will reconvene the regular Board of the Board of Commissioners meeting. Madam, do we have a closed session item?
Yes, sir. We're asking for a closed session for real property acquisition pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A5.
If I can get a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the statute? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
We will go into closed session. If I take a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.